You have your quorum now.
Thank you, Erica. Okay, we will call the October 20th Select Board meeting to order. We'll go through the remote script. See, let's go through the roll call first. All board members, please signify that you are here. Melissa Murphy.
Here.
Matt Fee.
Here.
Christie Ferantella.
Here.
I don't see Dawn yet. For staff members, just going to go through who I see first. Jericho.
Here.
Erica.
Present.
Brian Turbot.
In attendance.
Libby Gibson.
Present.
Ken Bogrant.
Present.
Rob Rainey.
There.
Holly Backus.
Present.
Thank you. I think everybody jumped around. I think I got everybody. I don't see anyone else that's on here that's not not been called. Okay, this open meeting of the Select Board is being conducted remotely pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. Sure, public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment as it will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by video conference via Zoom webinar. It's posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Let's see, all supporting materials that have been provided to the members of this board are available on the town's website unless otherwise noted. Flip through here. Remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. If you're a if you're a participant, please take your video off and mute if you're not speaking. If members wish to engage in conversation with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. After board members have spoken, the chair may afford public comment to those members of the public that have joined the meeting via Zoom members. The public who wish to speak must state their name and be allowed acknowledged by and speak through the chair. Okay, I think that's most of that. Let's see, there's no changes to the agenda. So as you see, announcements, Libby?
Okay, so we've got what's written on the agenda. The meeting is being video and audio recorded. As you mentioned, the vaccine clinic is ongoing at 131 Pleasant Street, Sundays from noon to three. And the full schedule is on the town website. We have a Q and A session tomorrow regarding PFAS and drinking water on the islands. Tomorrow, Thursday, October 21st, 5:30 PM, and registration can be made in advance at the link that is on the agenda and also posted online. The Cape and Islands Commission on the Status of Women in Partnership with the Nantucket Community School is sponsoring an informal listening circle on this coming Saturday, October 23rd, from 1:30 to 3:56, Sutter Street. You can register online as well. And Melissa, did you want to add anything to that?
No, I don't think I have much to add other than thank you, Libby, just that this is a really wonderful and important opportunity for people to come and share their concerns about issues impacting women and families on Nantucket. And these are a commission that can take those concerns and turn them into actionable items that end up at the legislature. So it's it's an important listening session. So please attend if you can.
Thank you so much. DPW has a couple of announcements. There is a hazardous waste collection day this Saturday, a lot going on this Saturday from nine to one at the DPW office entrance, which is second gate after the landfill entrance. And there's also a textile collection drop off only this coming Sunday, the 24th, from eight to noon. And sidebar, at next week's board meeting, I think we are going to get a brief update on the reopening of the Take It or Leave It. We are making progress towards hiring attendants. However, there will be some rules there, and they are going to largely require behavioral modifications. So we will hear more about that next week. But to put it short in a nutshell, we're going to have, we expect, a kind of a Niagara Falls-ish drop off of Take It or Leave It items based on the inquiries we're getting about when the facility will be reopened. And we are simply not equipped to handle Niagara Falls of Take It or Leave It items. We are equipped to handle something much less than that. And people are going to have to be patient and and well behaved. So more on that next week. The warrant for the 2022 Annual Town Meeting, which will take place on Monday, May 2nd, is currently open for citizen warrant article submittals until November 15th, which is a Monday, I believe, through 4:00 PM that day. And remember, you need to get the signatures of at least 10 registered voters. We always urge people to get more than that because some people think they're registered to vote, but they're not. I think that's it.
Any Select Board announcements or comments? Matt?
Yeah, I had a call from Chris Fuller. He does a lot of stuff on the harbor he dives. And he said the black macroalgae, the black algae out there is the worst. He has ever seen it. He's going to try to get a video of it for us and video of it for people to see because it is in a sort of indicative of poor water quality and things that are happening. And I think we talked about it last week or the week before. I think we need updates on fertilizer enforcement and all that kind of stuff. We really, you know, it's it's it when I, and it's funny, we talked about it and then a couple of days later, you know, out of the blue, I got this information. So I just think we need to, you know, if we're going to make it, if it's it is one of our goals. And I think, you know, we need to raise it to a level. We don't want to be, you know, wishing we had done more five years from now.
Thank you, Matt. This could connect to something that you mentioned before about an agricultural waiver that the Cape, some, I think in the Cape has. That could be pulled into that as well, if there's an update there. I had one thing. I was in Providence this past weekend and I noticed all of the bike shares and the, what's the other little zip ones? The that you stand on, you zip around. I'm spacing.
Scooter.
Thank you, scooter. I like the like a scooter share. And they were strung everywhere, all over the sidewalks. And that was one of our concerns with the Bike Share Program here with Sandy Pedals. And I haven't seen that this last year, but I saw what our concern was in Providence. This doesn't look good. And so I think we've done it well so far, and we should continue to keep an eye on it so it doesn't go to that. Any other comments? On the board? Okay, there's no follow up comments from previous prior Select Board meetings. We can go to public comment if there's anything the public would like to talk about that's not on the agenda. Okay, we have two hands up. Just state your name. You come on. Go ahead.
Hi, Jason. This is Megan Perry. I'm actually wondering if I could follow up on my questions from last week, if that would be okay, just two quick questions to clarify on it.
Yeah, long as it has nothing to do with our discussion later on Baxter Road.
It it shouldn't. I was just reading over the response that I got from Ms. Gibson the other day in regards to my question last week. And one of my questions would be, has anyone considered the potential conflict that might arise due to campaign funds that have been donated to select board members? Because if you do the percentages, 91% in 2018, 91% of Miss Holgate's campaign funds came from Baxter Road homeowners or direct relatives. 68 in 2017, 68% were from Baxter Road homeowners or direct relatives to your campaign. And then in 2019, 27% came from Baxter Road homeowners or direct relatives or the primary contractor for SBPF. And I didn't know if that might cause a problem down the road for anything. So that was my my first question. And my second question in response to the answer from last week was the Select Board has asked the CONCOM to answer a number of questions before considering whether they can have independent counsel. One of those questions would be, what is their strategy? And I'm just curious, I'm struggling to see the difference between explaining the CONCOM strategy to one of the applicants, meaning the Select Board. What's the difference between explaining that strategy to Steve Cohen or Glenn Wood, who are the attorney for SBPF? Since SBPF and Select Board are in a partnership. If that's the case, and Town Council has made it really clear that he represents the Select Board, then who is the legal representation for the CONCOM right now? Or are they just kind of like flying in the dark, not having their own counsel? Those are my my questions, and I know you guys can't answer tonight, but maybe call up next week.
Well, these are individual questions, so we'll follow up via email. If there's a question that is broader than we would, we we just can't do this every week on your question. So when they're individual like this, for things that you want to know, the town manager will get back to you. Thank you, Megan.
Okay, thank you so much.
Go to the next one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brooke Moore here. I wanted to let the community know about a project that is being worked on with the Community School and Jennifer Frazi from A Safe Place, a subset of the Healthy Community Collaborative. And it's a survey, we're surveying organizations on island to find out how they use interpreter and translator services. And if they do not, would they like to? And the goal of the project is to determine whether there's a potential for a buying collaborative to get cost effective interpreter and translation services for island nonprofits. And so I just wanted, we sent this an email with the link to the survey out to a broad group of people. But if we've missed anyone and anyone's watching this and they would like to learn more, they can reach out to Brian Lanane at the Community School, and his email is L E N A N E B as in boy at N P S K dot org. And we look forward to hearing back from the organizations, the community, and making interpretation and translation services broadly available. Thanks.
Thank you, Brooke. Any other public comments tonight that's on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We can move on to the COVID-19 update. Public Health Department, well, we decided to, outside of some unseen instances, to make this biweekly. Go ahead, Jericho.
Thank you very much. Hopefully, we can hold it to biweekly. Right now, I'm just looking at the most recent testing results. We're looking at a 5.81% positivity rate on the last seven days. There has been a fairly pronounced but gradual rise in positive results, both through the hospital's collection and through other testing groups. This is to be expected. We're starting to transition to inside weather. We're kind of riding a little bit of a unseasonal continued heat, which I think is keeping the testing results down. But we will most likely see some increase as more people move to internal activities. Vaccination rates continue pretty well. We're doing third doses in the trailer. The town vaccination program is booked out to November 2nd right now. There's always a little bit of shuffling around, cancellations and such. But the hospital is also stepping in to do a once weekly booster clinic. You can find signup information on the town's webpage, nantucket-ma.gov/vaccine. And that has all the links to the various signups, and we'll also host if we do start back up doing boosters for the town as well. Right now, your sources for vaccination are the town Sunday clinics for first and second doses. Those will begin to phase out after Thanksgiving. We will be doing our last first dose clinic. At, it's going to be November 27th, I believe, the Sunday after Thanksgiving. Three weeks subsequent to that, we will not be doing vaccinations for the town any longer. We've been at it six days a week since May, and we're getting close to burnout. And there are a number of new people who are moving into the space and are better suited to do vaccinations on a large scale than we are. Past that, we are looking to get some additional vaccine resources around Johnson &amp; Johnson. So during the last three weeks of that clinic, we'll be able to vaccinate first doses for anyone who has not gotten one. And we're going to have more details on scheduling and how you get in to get a first dose in that three week period by the end of this month, most likely. Past that, we should expect a slight increase in cases continuing on. It's important to remember that we're entering flu season, which is, you know, respiratory disease transmission season. And COVID is going to be one of those respiratory diseases this time. Other than that, though, wastewater shows basically steady. We're below median for the last two weeks, which is a good sign. It means the community spread is limited and that we haven't had any large spikes from spreader events. I believe that's most of the information. If anyone has any questions, please let me know.
Any questions for Jericho? Matt?
Yeah, we asked last week, and you guys are going to look it up, or maybe the week before, what percent of the teachers and school children have been vaccinated?
So for the 12 and up, we've gotten, I think, the exact number is uncertain because I don't know the populations of the private schools off the top of my head. But we're looking at somewhere on the 65% or better of eligible, eligible 12, 12 years and older. We're also anticipating the approval of at least Pfizer, potentially Moderna as well, for the five to 11-year-old category. We've been anticipating it for a while, but it looks to be happening towards the end of this month or early November. And we'll be doing some surveys with the school to figure out the best way to deploy vaccines. However, the five to 11 category is a significantly different group of people than the 12 and up category in terms of how you go about vaccinating them. And it really should be done in a clinical environment with, you know, nurses and teachers who are know the people. It's a much more stressful thing than a 12-year-old getting a vaccine. But I think we'll have full numbers on that by the end of next week, and we should have a plan in place with the various vaccine providers, hopefully before approval of the vaccine. Although, as always is the case with this, when the approval gets through on a on a federal level, that does not immediately mean that we can begin dispensing it. There are a couple of steps that it needs to filter through. Last but not least, the state guidelines on how we distribute it.
And a follow up, Jason, and what percentage, do they add up the teach, what percent of the teachers, do they add up the teachers and the students to get the 80% so you can take, I'm basically, I'm trying to encourage people to get vaccinated so they can take their masks off. Because if the state's allowing it, let's get vaccinated. That's what I'm trying to.
I think that we've been doing a fair number of first and second doses are 12 and up. We saw a spike when it was no longer an emergency use authorization. We've run a few clinics in the schools, and we have a constant clinic going on the Sundays so that we can get any teacher who wants to be vaccinated. I think that the internal vaccination status is not some, I can't correlate specific people. That's verging on a hippo thing. But I think that among teachers, we have very high vaccination rates. I would say 80 plus percent, definitely higher than the the median outside of schools. And then for for children 12 and up, I'm pretty sure we've gotten everyone who has wanted one. And I do not know where vaccine requirements are going to go, nor would I like to speculate on that particular topic. But if anyone is over 12 and wants a vaccination, we can do that on a Sunday, any Sunday. Please come in.
Thank you, Jericho. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you for your work, Jericho.
My pleasure. Thank you, guys.
There's not any new business that I know of. Go to approval of minutes, payroll warrants, and treasury warrants.
So moved.
Second.
All is a favor by roll call. Melissa Murphy.
Hi.
Christie Ferantella.
Hi.
Matt Fee.
Hi.
Jason Bridges, I. That passes 4-0. Penning contracts. Any questions or any feedback, Libby?
Unless there's questions.
Okay.
Move approval.
A second.
All was a favor by roll call. Melissa Murphy.
I.
Christie Ferantella.
I.
Matt Fee.
I.
Jason Bridges, I. That passes 4-0. On to reports. Nantucket Historical Commission update. We have Hillary Rayport here with us today. Hillary? Do you need to share the screen?
Yes, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Hi, everyone. It's very nice to be here with you. Thanks for inviting me to update the community and the board about the historical commission. I'm also very pleased to see Holly Backus here, our town preservation planner. Hello, Holly. I'm going to go ahead and share a presentation. Okay, can you all see the presentation? Great. Okay, so the I just, I just need to move this so it's not in my way. There we go. Great. So this is the first update that the Historical Commission has been able to make to the Select Board. We were reformed in our, reconstituted in our current iteration in July of 2019. So we've been working for about two and a half years. So I thought I would update the board and the community just with a little information about historical commissions in context. Our recent achievements, our future goals, or at least what we are thinking, how we're thinking of our future goals. And then leave lots of time if there are questions. So given that Nantucket has had a Historic District Commission since 1955 and has only had a Historical Commission since 2005, and only much more recently has it been quite active. I thought it would be helpful just to take a minute to explain that we're a seven-person independent government commission responsible for preservation planning on Nantucket. So we serve the public by protecting the national historic landmark of Nantucket. We advise the Select Board and the community on matters of preservation. And we work with the preservation planners, Holly Backus, the Planning Director Andrew Vorse, and other municipal agencies. And we create plans and guidelines for preservation, direct surveys of buildings and lands of archaeological and historic significance. And we advocate for historic preservation. As a municipal commission, we are the counterparty within the town for nonprofit societies such as the Nantucket Preservation Trust and other groups interested in preservation and history on Nantucket. I just wanted to put the local Historical Commission in context by explaining that locally, we are part of a system of preservation that connects to how the United States of America preserves its significant places. So we are connected to the U.S. Park Service, which maintains the National Register of Historic Places. So I just mentioned that because we hear about historic districts, we hear about the Nantucket National Historic Landmark. But from a government perspective, the way preservation is encouraged is through the National Register, which is really just a signification. It doesn't have any standard protections. But once a building, or in the case of Nantucket, a whole island is placed on the National Register, it can offer certain benefits and for tax credits, for funding, for the development of technical guidance for its preservation. And that's all pushed down from the federal level to the state level and to the local level. So what this means for Nantucket locally and why it's important to maintain a Historical Commission locally is that in addition to doing local preservation planning and advocacy locally, we can also liaise with the Massachusetts Historical Commission in terms of their review and compliance when there are federal actions that might affect our island. An example of that would be the mitigation fund that was established in response to the wind farm. And we can also support tax credits when a property owner wants to have a rebate for a historic rehabilitation of a property that's being used as, you know, a hotel or a rental. That's something that we support locally. But we're very different from the Historic District Commission. The Historic District Commission maintains design guidelines and does architectural review. They issue demolition permits and they, or they permit the building inspector to issue a demolition permit. And they also administer the minimum maintenance bylaw. The Historical Commission locally, really, the most important thing that we do is surveying and documenting buildings of historic interest on Nantucket. So the first year, the Historical Commission really was, was active with our own organization. I'm not going to dwell on this because organization is not as exciting as some of the other things that we've been doing recently. But we are fully appointed. We do meet at least monthly. Shortly after our formation in 2019, the town created a position for a preservation planner, which was quickly filled by Holly Backus, who serves as our staff liaison. We are part of a certified local government designation, which really just gives us access to grants and some additional access to technical training with Park Service. That was a significant organizational achievement of our first year. Importantly, we did complete training. So we had a two-day training program with the National Association of Preservation Commissioners, which Holly set up for us. And the HTC was also invited to join. So those are some of our organizational achievements. We've also been quite active with preservation achievements. The thing that is most significant, and I would say of which we are most proud of achieving, a beginning, a start to, is that we kicked off what will be the first island-wide survey of historic resources in over 30 years on Nantucket. And we did this with the assistance of the Massachusetts Historical Commission, who is funding 50% of the cost of the project through a grant. It is a about a $52,000 project in total, which will survey a pilot portion of the island in fishlots, but also make a plan. So at the end of this one year period, we will have a plan of all of the different neighborhoods, how we're going to step through surveying all of the structures in the neighborhoods for the entire island, taking into account all the resources. And this is going to be incredibly important for preservation on Nantucket. Because when an applicant is interested in going to the HTC to look for approval for some kind of change or action or even demolition, the HTC needs to know the significance of the structure. They need to know what the distinctive elements are of the structure. And if this hasn't been recorded, it can't be preserved. So this survey is all about providing information on our national historic landmark, which can then be used by other people who are doing research, who want to know more about their, the architectural history of their homes, or by the HTC. So it's very important, and it's a fundamental activity of Historical Commission. We've also supported town agencies that are undergoing Section 106 reviews by liaising with the Massachusetts Historical Commission to identify historic resources in the area of work so that they can be protected. As most of you know, historic pavement was something we identified as an under, underappreciated and not very well understood and highly threatened resource on Nantucket. These are 200-year-old stones in our streets that have been carved by steam tools in many cases, or split by hand. They've been there for a long time. And we developed and delivered final recommendations and guidelines to the DPW. We received research from preservation engineering that led to the updating of the specification for land cobblestone in a permeable bedding instead of stone dust. And that's now part of the official specification for cobblestone repair on Nantucket. And we also did some work on planning and zoning, reviewing and compiling past plans for Wilkes Square, Harbor Place, and advising other town boards on preservation planning strategies for this area. We published reports, including some reports I haven't even talked about here. On the one end, you can see we published a report on roundabouts with Nantucket in mind, looking at how roundabouts could perhaps more effectively fit into some of the smaller areas of Nantucket. And all of these reports are available on our website, and there are other reports as well. We've also had education and advocacy initiatives. One of the things that we identified as a goal was to reach out to different One of the things that we identified as a goal was to reach out to different communities on Nantucket to advocate for preservation and to really help them with what they might be interested in that might intersect with preservation. So one of the areas that we identified was the Nantucket Association of Real Estate Brokers. And we did a, we were very interested in educating the brokers more about how their buyers might be able to take advantage of tax credits. If the home is a, or the building is on the National Register, and if it's a contributing structure to Nantucket, it can be eligible for rebates for qualified rehabilitation. It can be up to 40% of the qualified rehabilitation costs, so it's pretty significant. So we thought, how can we get brokers to know about these and get people to consider them when they have a historic building? And by the way, the definition of historic on Nantucket goes all the way up to buildings built in 1975. Not all buildings, obviously, but buildings that contribute to the period of significance, which extends to 1975 on Nantucket, could be eligible for tax credits for the rehabilitation. So we're going to be offering an accredited course for continuing education credit. That's because of COVID, been moved to spring of 2022, but we're excited about that and grateful to NAREB for inviting us to offer this course with their trainer. We've also supported a WPI project with an interest in salvaging historic interiors. We prefer that they remain, but certainly the historic material, we do not want to see leave the island. So is there a way that we can keep that here? We have been promoting awareness of Nantucket's historically Black community. We created a monument to, to resident Arthur Cooper, self-emancipated man who lived near Angola Street. This was in partnership with the Land Bank and the Museum of African-American History, so you can all go and see the monument. I know many of you were there. But just as important as the monument, we really created a wonderful program. We're grateful to our town manager for speaking, and we had other, other folks participating. It was a great day. It also raised awareness for the buildings, about the buildings that are no longer here, and why they might be no longer here. Arthur Cooper's building is no longer standing. In fact, all of the homes on Angola Street were demolished. There's no trace of the free Black community that lived there. And lastly, we are participating in a collaboration to create an exhibit on the history of preservation on Nantucket. This is a flyer that we created for NAREB called "How to Get the Government to Pay Your Client Not to Cut Her House", and we were happy that Dylan Fernandez tweeted about our dedication of the Arthur Cooper Monument. We did have some goals that we didn't achieve. It's important for us to coordinate and meet with the HTC. Ideally, we'd like to meet once, two times a year, but we are planning to meet November 12th. So we will be able to have a meeting in the next, or the current fiscal year. We also have a long-term goal of helping the town with a restoration and rehabilitation of the historic sidewalks on Main Street that are extremely dilapidated to the point where it might actually be hard to repair them. It is already hard. It might, they might end up not getting repaired. And we felt that a study would help the town plan for actual construction. So we partnered with the Commission on Disability. We applied for a grant that would fund a rehabilitation plan. This is not just a restoration. It's actually about making the sidewalk accessible, but also keeping the historic material there. We wanted to think about treatments to manage around the tree roots, treatments for ramps. Unfortunately, the CPC denied the application, so we'd love to have more conversation with our colleagues in the town about how to get this important work done. And just before we go to, before I wrap up and go to Q and A, some next goals. So we certainly want to continue to execute the island-wide survey of historic resources. We expect to do a little bit every year for many years. We do want to seek funding for the historic Main Street sidewalk restoration and rehabilitation to assist the town with going beyond just accessibility, but actually keeping it historic and accessible. And we want to continue to support and collaborate with the HTC. We have some ideas of new projects, and I want to stress that we haven't started working on any of these yet. So if you think, well, I didn't know anything about this, I'm announcing it here tonight. This is just a sketch of our work plan for the next year or longer. We think that it would be very helpful to have a preservation plan for town-owned historic resources. So this would be looking just at the resources that the town owns, documenting them, thinking about treatments over time and needs of these resources, and that these, this type of plan will come in handy when there's an opportunity. It's work that you really want to do ahead of time. We'd like to initiate some discussions with the local tribes and the state archaeologists. We'd like to assess archival needs with respect to historic records. And what I mean by this are records from the very old town meetings and the Historic Board of Selectmen notes, and find out if there's some preservation that we can do of these archives so that they persist in perpetuity. We also have an idea of investigating a small loan fund based on a model in Arlington, Massachusetts, which would make low-cost loans to individual owners of residential properties or commercial properties, but loans that can be used to help you maintain your home. It's very expensive. And the idea, in Arlington anyway, it's been self-funding for 30 years. It's a public-private partnership. So that's the end of my, my presentation. I'm going to stop. Let's see, I'm going to stop sharing my screen somehow. There we go. And yeah, I hope you can pepper me with questions about preservation, about our work. I would especially like to hear your thoughts on our future work. What is important to you? What do you think the challenges are? Any advice for us?
Wait, Matt?
Yes, Matt?
Yeah, first thing I'll say, that's, thank you. It's an amazing presentation. You guys have done a lot in a short period of time. The, the study on historic pavement was great. I read it, and I know more about pavement than I ever thought I need to know. And it's, you know, I'm glad that you guys did it. Tax credits are a great tool that we use. I didn't know about them till I was mostly done with 7 Ann Orange Street and applied retroactively and received some, and it is a huge help in rehabilitating buildings. And they pay for a lot of the buildings as qualified expenses. You know, all the new systems, you know, all the work you have to do, you know, it's pretty, it's pretty impressive, and it really is an incentive for people to do the right thing. And then my question was, why, what was the rationale for the CPC to deny the funds for that rehabilitation? Because I think $80,000, and that's, seems short money to, to me, but what's the rationale?
So I'm still awaiting the letter, but I was able to talk with the Chair of the CPC, and it was explained to me that there were two reasons. One was, we hadn't actually asked the town to pay for it. I mean, we did ask the town because the CPC asked us to after our presentation. So I think they'd like to see us make a formal request of the town, explain the study, see if there's other funding besides Community Preservation Act funding. But the second reason was that they felt it wasn't a priority. And I'm not sure if that means they think the town thinks it's not a priority, or if they just think that rehabilitating a sidewalk, historic sidewalk like Main Street, isn't a priority. So that was a bit of a puzzler to me.
Matt?
Well, I hope, you know, I hope we follow up and see, see what that is because anyone who's driven up Main Street recently can tell you that it's, it's needed. And if we're able to do it in a way that meets ADA requirements and still retains the historic material and character, I think it would be amazing, and it would be an example we could use around the rest of the island. So, you know, so good luck, you know, keeping that, you know, I'm in support. Good luck, you know, keeping that on the front burner.
Thank you. That's good to hear, Matt. I appreciate the comment.
Any other comments? Questions? I can say I was at the Arthur Cooper event, and it was really, it was well-organized. It was powerful. It was, you left something there, you know, in perpetuity. Like, it checked all the boxes, the boxes I didn't even know were there, and I got to learn about him. So that was really well-done, Hillary. So you and everybody who were involved, that was really great. So I really appreciate the work that you and Historical Commission, everybody else did.
Thank you. That was really a special day. I'm really glad you and others could be there, and it was a team effort. And that monument was given by, it was a gift of, to the land bank of a woman who lives on Angola Street. And I'm grateful to her and everybody who could make that happen.
One of the things you said coming down the road is, or maybe you're doing this now, surveying town-owned historic properties or anything historic. Is that started, or is that a future initiative?
Yeah, so the preservation plan for town-owned resources is, we, we want it to be a future initiative. There certainly are, there, there's a list of town-owned historic resources. It was maintained at the DPW, but, you know, we, we'd like to develop that, and we'd like to keep in touch with the board because certainly there's some intersection with the facilities work that you're doing. Just to comment way ahead of time, so there are no surprises of the historic perspective on some of these facilities. Nantucket's so unusual, you know, we have like this old building we've always had, and this person has always been in it. And bingo, you find out there's this incredible story and incredible construction history. So those are the sorts of things we want to, to look at and understand and share with the community.
Matt?
Yeah, one that I would like to see us dig into is what federal or state money is available when we make a plan for the jetties. That, that building needs some upgrading and needs some work. And I think that, you know, using the state and federal resources that are available to bring that back to its former glory and also bring it up to code and makes it very functional for tenants. I think that that would be, you know, a great project, a great thing for you guys to dig into.
Yeah, there actually are grants from the Massachusetts Historical Commission for, for the study or work on particular buildings. So if it's a municipally-owned building, you can apply for a grant, either do like a plan, or it can actually pay for work. The grants aren't very big, but if you really just want to do a study, they can, they can cover that. So we can definitely keep you posted on that. We did raise it last year, but it was just too short notice. So now with a little more lead time, we might be able to get that off the ground. And I know Holly, our preservation planner, keeps a close eye on those things as well.
Can we go to the public? We have a hand up?
Thank you. This is Bruce Mandell speaking. I liked that presentation very much. It was very informative. Thank you. My question is, are there any resources available to a community such as Maticat in the West End that would tell us what structures or private homes and things like that in our community might be considered qualifying for historic status or designation that might be helpful in the community preserving and enhancing these structures?
The answer is yes. And Holly, can I call on you to answer that?
Absolutely. Yes, Bruce, there, there are, we have, first of all, there are surveys that were done back in the 1980s of parts of Nantucket, especially out of Maticat. So there's cultural resource surveys available here at the town, as well as some of them are available on the state's website, Macris GIS. And actually, I could email you all that information, as well as the update to the NHL, the National Historic Landmark District that was done in 2012, from actually CPC funds that NPT acquired to update the NHL and actually include our period of significance up to 1975. And that has a list of about 300 pages worth of Nantucket properties, whether they're vacant or non-vacant, whether they're contributing or not contributing. And ones, I will tell you this, there is a caveat on it. You can take a look at it on the town's website, on the Historical Commission's page. It's listed, and it's all in chronological order, alphabetical order. And so you can look up that particular property, and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. Thanks.
Yeah, so we, we meet, thank you, Holly. Yeah, we meet the third Friday of the month at 10:00 a.m. We've been meeting via Zoom, and, you know, Holly's available to answer question about, questions about particular structures, and we're also available. If you want to join us, you're all welcome.
Thank you, Hillary. Any last comments from the board? Okay. Thank you, Hillary. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you. Take care.
Thank you.
Town managers' report.
Thank you. So we have one item under the town manager's report, and in consultation with the Chair and the Vice Chair, this has happened a couple of times now, I think. Sometimes there are board member questions during the annual tax rate hearing, which is currently scheduled for November 17th. And it was, it was discussed and suggested that an advanced discussion could be helpful so that if the board is thinking of any substantive tax rate shift changes, there are time to make those and prepare those before the hearing. There, there does get to be a timing issue between setting the tax rate, getting Department of Revenue approval, and printing and mailing the tax bills. And if there's a lot of work to do to restructure the tax rate shift calculations and formulas, that all gets very difficult. So I think the assessor and the finance director have a presentation to give, and hopefully this will be informative, and if the board does want to make changes, they can be made well ahead of time.
Thank, thank you, Libby. My name's Rob Rannie. I'm the tax assessor for the town of Nantucket, as you all know. I prepared a little bit of a refresher course, as we only do this once a year, on the purpose of the tax rate hearing, how it works, what the residential exemption is, how that works, and the shift itself, and how that works. We do not have final values for FY22 yet. We're still working on those. It's a, it's a long, challenging process. So I've used, in this presentation, I've used numbers from Fiscal 21 because we know what those were. So if we could go to the next slide, please. This basically shows that the tax levy, which went last year was about 88 million, just under 89 million, is distributed between the residential class, the open space class, commercial and industrial classes, as well as personal property. On the right-hand side of the screen are the percentages that those work out to for the, the total value of the island. Next, excuse me, next slide, please. So every year, municipalities decide within limits established by the, by statute in the Department of Revenue, the percentage of the tax levy that will be paid by each class of real property owners and personal property owners. The decision, as you know, will be made at a public hearing, and that's not tonight. That'll be hopefully closer to the end of November. Next slide, please. So traditionally, this, this sort of looks back over the last 10 years. It shows that the residential class, which is the, the blue line at the top, is, pays predominantly most of the tax levy. As you, towards the bottom, there's a commercial component, which is above the industrial and open space and personal property, which are kind of squeezed in at the bottom because there, there's this percentage that they pay of the tax levy is so small. Next slide, next slide, please. So moving on to the residential exemption, the residential exemption was enacted by the Commonwealth in 1979 and adopted pretty quickly after that locally on Nantucket in 1981. The residential exemption is an option under Property Tax Classification, Mass. General Law, Chapter 59, Section 5C, that shifts the tax burden within the residential class from owners of moderately, or as we would say, year-round property owners, to seasonal ones. Because one of the requirements of the residential exemption To uh, seasonal ones, because one of the requirements of the residential exemption. Is you have to not only own the property, but you have to live in it as your primary, primary residence. So you're basically shifting the burden within the residential class from, from the year-round owners to those that are. That own their property only seasonally and occupy it seasonally. The amount of the tax levy paid by the residential class remains the same. Uh, but it's, the way it's divided up is a little bit different because the uh. The exempted residential valuation of the levy is distributed over less assessed value. Um, because the, the year-round people or the, or the, you know, the primary owners are paying less of it and the, and it's shifted to the others. Um, this creates a shift, as I've just mentioned, within the residential class. That reduces the taxes paid by homeowners of moderately valued properties. With the difference being made up by the non-owner occupied residential properties. So. You're, you're getting a benefit to some, but then you're shifting it to others. Next slide, please. Just sort of some bullet points here. Uh, Mass General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section five C allows a community to provide an exemption to taxpayers. Who own and occupy their dwelling as their primary residence. This exemption may not exceed thirty-five percent of the average value within the residential property class. In fiscal twenty-one, the average residential value of on Nantucket was just under two point one million dollars. And uh, you all selected a twenty-five percent exemption, which reduced each qualifying parcel by five hundred and twenty-two thousand nine hundred and fourteen dollars. Next slide, please. The loss in value and value attributed to the exemption is made up by the entire residential class. So you are. Yes, you're getting a benefit, but there's no free lunch. So it's, somebody else has to make up the difference. Uh, for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one, there were, there were, this number is a little deceiving. There were twenty, twenty-two hundred and fifty-one. Whole, what we call whole exemptions. Um, and really it's, there were twenty-two hundred and ninety-eight qualifying exemptions, but what happens is if you have a. A property that the exemption amount exceeds the value of your property or is close to it, we cannot reduce the value of your property. To below ten percent. So there are a number of partial exemptions where the value of the property is low enough that you don't get the full benefit of the exemption. Only the residential class is affected by changes to the residential exemption. Um, and Nantucket is one of approximately only twenty communities in the state, including Boston, however, which has the residential exemption. So it's not. We get a lot of questions from the public, um, assuming that it's a Nantucket specific exemption. It's not, it's, it's a state exemption. That Nantucket has had the benefit of for many, many years. Um, next slide, please. So when we, when talking about a shift, what we're doing is we're shifting the percentage of the levy for. Um, that is raised by each class of property and it's shifted from the residential class to the commercial class. So in fiscal twenty twenty-one, uh, the shift that we had was one point seven. So as you can see and down in the commercial, industrial and personal properties classes. Um, the, what, what it would be on the left, you know, the, the commercial there says five point six seven percent, that's before the shift. With, with the one point seven shift, they're now paying nine point six four percent of the levy and as you can see above. The residential uh, portion is reduced because you're shifting it from the residential to the commercial. Next slide, please. This is sort of a, an illustration of what that looks like. So the, the pie is, is the tax levy. So the, the, the amount that has to be raised by taxes. Doesn't change, it's just how it's distributed among the different classes uh, changes. So this is, this is what it looks like with the one point seven shift. Next slide, please. This is what it would have looked like if we did a one point six five shift. It's not much of a difference, but it, it is something. Next slide, and this is a one point six shift. So between those three slides, you can see the residential uh, portion is increasing. And the commercial and industrial personal property portions are decreasing because the shift is, is de- it's, it's a sliding, sliding scale. So. Again, you, you have one whole pie and you're just how you're splitting it up is what we're talking about. Next slide, please. Um, these are some of the options that we presented last year or that were possible. So there, you know, this is what it looks like with a twenty percent residential exemption. A twenty-five percent residential exemption, a thirty percent and a thirty-five percent, those are on the left. And then the shift numbers, what they would have looked like, we had the, we had a twenty-five percent exemption. Which was a one point seven shift and that's sort of in the middle of the screen. And then on the far right, you can see that as you graduate up to each shift in each uh, class. The, the numbers on the right show the changes. For the average, those, those are for the average tax bills, obviously individuals are a little bit different. So if you can see, you know, so if you're going from a one point seven down to a one point six five. Uh, the commercial change was, was about a four hundred dollar change. Um, and the residential change was about, if you had, if you did not have the exemption, it's about a thirty-two dollar change. If you did have the exemption, uh, it was about a twenty-five dollar change. Next slide, please. And that's, that's about it. I didn't want to take up too much time because we're going to have a real one in a couple of weeks, but this is, this is sort of a refresher.
Thank you, Rob. Any thoughts from anyone? Matt?
You know, I, I, we went down a little bit on the uh, commercial. I would, you know, I sort of. I'm sort of thinking we go to one-six this year and keep twenty-five percent uh, residential. The reason I, you know, when we get there, we'll talk about it, but. To be thinking about it, we've got a lot of big expenses uh, with coastal resiliency, other things. It would be nice to have. The ability in the future to do that. Uh, I also think that there's a. Sort of a lot of those quote-unquote residential properties are being used commercially. And so uh. You know, I, I, I think the commercial are paying a different, a, a different amount. So I, I think in a fairness issue. You know, I would like to, over the next few years, you know, give the commercial, you know, commercial properties at our commercial. A bit of a break and try to level the playing field.
Thank you, Matt. Does anybody remember when we went from twenty to twenty-five percent for the residential exemption? Was that two thousand seventeen?
Was it? Yes, yeah, more, yeah, I think, yeah, I think it was fiscal seventeen. Because it was at that time, the uh, Municipal Modernization Act came out and they allowed the exemption to go up to thirty-five percent. And we, we had been at twenty and we went to twenty-five.
Matt?
Yeah, and there were board members at the time that wanted to go to the full thirty-five, which I, I, you know, advocated against, uh, because. I, I, at this point, the year-round people with an exemption have a really, you know, a really pretty good deal still. And you have to keep, you know, you gotta keep that in mind and sort of keep some of your ammunition dry. You know, that thirty-five percent we might need. Uh, you know, we might need to be able to use that in the future, but I, you know, as soon as we, if you give something like that. It's hard to take it back. You know, it's, it's easy to let out the reins than it is to pull them back in. You know, so I would caution us about doing that, you know, we're talking twenty-four dollars and, you know, so it's, so anyway.
Any other thoughts, questions? You thought this would be, go ahead, Kristi.
Just more of a comment that I think it was really helpful to see this before we have the public hearing um, later next month. I feel like sometimes we get a lot of questions and it's a little bit too late, so it was good to have time to process this. So thank you, Rob.
Yeah, Matt?
And one other thing I look at and I talked, I sent Rob an email this afternoon, so I didn't have to do the math myself. You know, the average uh. Average with real residential exemption is valued at a million three, you know, or, or, and so as million, no, a million three. The average without it is valued at two million, two million one. And so you take that, you know, that alone puts a difference between the two of about thirty-five percent. And then you take five hundred thousand dollars, which is another twenty-five percent on the, you know, on the value. And there's a, you know, sort of the average with an exemption is a, is saving about sixty percent over the other. You know, so we're getting, you know, we, we are getting a great benefit as, as an exemption right now, so.
And I, I would just say that these are twenty twenty-one numbers, the twenty twenty-two numbers are probably going to be higher. Um, because they're based on sales that took place in twenty twenty. And we, as we all know, the real estate market was pretty crazy and. When the market is crazy and things are going up, everybody tends to sort of go up as well. So. Um, this, this is just kind of food for thought at this point, but yeah, no, I would, I would agree with Matt. I'm not supposed to make a recommendation, but I would say. You want to hold something in reserve, you don't want to max things out.
Matt?
And the other point I have to make is the, the, the rate is a math equation. You know, everyone says, oh, you're so lucky, your rate is low. Well, our rate is low, but our value is high. And the, you know, and so our averages, average without the exemption would be paying, you know, fair, a fair amount of money and the people that don't have it. Especially the commercial that are paying a bit more, are, are, are paying a fair amount of money. And to afford to live here, a lot of people, you know, have employee housing, that doesn't get exempted. They have their businesses, which are, you know, could be highly valued and, you know, you start adding it up. And to be able to live here and, you know, remain here is a fairly expensive uh, undertaking. And so anything we can do to, you know, sort of, you know, to tip the scales a little bit and keep some ammunition for later, I think is important.
Thank you, Matt. Any other thoughts or questions from the board? Welcome, Don. Okay, thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Anything else, Libby, on that for Town Managers Report? You good?
That was it.
Okay. Moving on to the Select Board Reports and Comments, we're going to review, discuss, slash, adopt. Uh, Select Board Position Statement regarding the Wisconsin Bluff Erosion Control Project. Uh, Libby's going to kind of walk us through some of the, how we got to this today. I wanted to say. You know, uh, Kristi and I chose, we talked about what words to put on here and we chose review, discussion, adoption. To give us room to do all of those. It doesn't mean we have to adopt anything tonight, but I do hope we review and discuss tonight. Libby?
Sorry. So, um. Pursuant to recent executive sessions that the board has held. Involving um, litigation between the town and the Scotts of Beach Preservation Fund, SBPF. The board had some discussion about compiling a list of talking points regarding various issues of the project. And the discussion was, uh, you know. Surrounded the, the litigation, obviously, and it was pointed out a few times that. The Select Board has a much wider perspective of the issues around the project than the Conservation Commission. Does as, you know, they have very much of a regulatory focus, obviously that's their role and the board has a lot of other considerations. So the idea was to put. Uh, this sort of talking point list together and that occurred. Between uh, Ken Bogrand, myself and Mr. Feath. Um, we uh, really mostly Ken and, and Matt did this and then we kind of cleaned it up a bit and then. Had some staff discussion in which we were proposing that the board consider putting out a statement, a position statement about the project, which the board members could use to discuss the project when asked. And, and really put it online so that people can be referred to it so that there's a consistent message coming from the town. And uh, so that statement was developed through town administration with some input from individual board members, no group emails or anything like that. And the idea was to bring this to a board meeting for review and discussion and um, to obtain any public input. So that's how it came about.
Thank you, Libby, for that background. Melissa?
Uh, thanks, Jason and, and Libby. If I might just add, I, I feel like one of the most important things. Um, about this from my perspective is that, um. We hear a lot of feedback from proponents and opponents of the Scotts of Beach G O Tube project. Um, but clearly we're representatives of the greater community. And I think in light of the fact that we're facing um, half a billion dollars in capital investments over the next five to ten years. It felt really important to um, give the community some context of. Um, how we're approaching this project and where. Our focus is, which there hasn't been a lot of opportunity to discuss that in my short time on the board. Mostly because we have our and have been in litigation. So. Um, I, I just wanted to put that context out there that for me, it feels very important to hear. From the Nantucket community, the wider Nantucket community. About how they would like us to approach this project and um, sort of turn the mic down a little bit on the people who are. Um, opposed or in favor of the G O Tubes. And, you know, I want to hear from the average Nantucket community citizen about what their thoughts are. Um, and how they would like to see this board approach policy concerning not just this project, but also coastal erosion. So. Um, the hope from my perspective was to get some conversation and some input started. Um, to help us and also contextualize our concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. I also was uh. Wanted us to put something out like, like, like this statement because as the elected policymakers. The community, our constituents need to know what is our vision, what do we stand for, what do we, what do we want? I mean, Matt, you asked that one day. What do we want? I mean, nobody really knows what we want. Do we even know what we want? And so this, this pushed. What are our concerns? What are the town's overall, bigger picture concerns? And, and really, what, what are the lens that we're looking through? So we're not trying to just explain to everybody like. Oh, no, you need to understand everything we're going through. Like, it's, it's not one of those, it's, it's. What are, everything that we have to consider in this project and um, my, those quotes, I, I said those quotes to, to many uh, outlets and the paper hasn't got in there, but we're not at. I don't feel like we're at odds with anyone. We're really trying to. Figure this out with the, with a very, very large lens. And I think Melissa, you said it, whether it's. You know, a hundred million, a billion, they, there's, there's some significant cost that's going to affect everyone. And uh, every taxpayer. So if you're not on the east, east side of the island, it's, this, this is going to affect you and coastal resiliency in, in general. So those are my opening thoughts. Anything, uh, I want the board to talk a little bit before we go to, to the public. Matt?
Yeah, I was, if you look at the, well, just it was for the public in case some people aren't, haven't looked at it. The goal that we've written is to preserve the homes and access to Baxter Road as long as it's not harming others. Placing the majority of the costs on those that benefit. While working cooperatively to mitigate the town's exposure and provide an equitable framework for other areas of the island. You know, that's sort of, that's our big goal. Uh, you know, if, and so. We've, we've listed the concerns and if we want, you know, if people, if we want to go through those or talk about those, we can, but I think. You know, the reality is we're in a, a, a set position right now with, you know, certain constraints and certain uh, in a certain. Aspects that we're going to have to deal with, whether we want to deal with them or not. And I would hope that this is a way, you know, I think we've made a big move. I think SBPF. Admitting that they are going to have to move at some point, I'm accepting that, that's way different than it was a while ago. Uh, some of the work group. Issues that we uh, identified last year were uh, or, you know, some or all of them are included in this. And there's still a lot of uh, detail, a lot of meat on the bone that would have to happen. If this is what we're going to do. There's, you know, there's agreement, there would have to be agreements to be, you know, understood and struck and, you know, sort of we. This, but I, and I, I look at this as a opportunity. It's an opportunity for us to tighten up some of the things that have been an issue. It's an opportunity, if we're forming a partnership, well, then we need to be partners. And, and we, and that means that we can't be in a situation, sort of, hold harmless is a big part of this, you know, not having. Uh, you know, not having, you know, having threats, but having a partnership and the threat. So I think that that's what is in, you know, that's the. Spirit of uh, of what's here. And I do think it can be, you know, if we do this. We do this correctly, it can provide a model for how do you pay for it? How do you pay for it fairly? we do this correctly, it can provide a model for how do you pay for it? How do you pay for it fairly? How do you, you know, how do we find sand? And, you know, I think we can use the existing situation to the town's advantage. And, you know, and, and to the homeowners in the towns and to, and clarify how we're gonna do this going forward in certain areas. I think this is, I know some people are saying that we are, you know, we're moving too fast and this is sort of out of sequence or, you know, there'll be a lot of probably things we're gonna hear. I wish we had the ability, you know, to take four more months, six more months, another year. We don't, you know, we need to get sand on that thing this winter to make sure that it is not impacting, you know, downdrift beaches. We need to get that done this winter. And we need to, you know, we need to move forward in some manner. So, and so that, that's sort of, my hope is that we can, we can do that.
Thank you, Matt. Don and Kristi?
I think that it was really important to put all of these concerns down on paper that we've been talking about for so many years. And really highlighted to the community in such a concise list where it's very easy to understand and it hits all of the big, big picture concerns. Everything still exists that did exist when this started and was voted to be started as an emergency. And it's even further highlighted now with what we know, with more knowledge of what we're facing in terms of sea level rise and coastal erosion going forward, where this can help set a stage on how to do some things correctly. However, this project has become so muddied with, with very strong feelings on either end and other things playing into it with personalities and so forth that have just butted heads for so many years. And and I feel like for a while, the select board just has completely not known what to do. Here's things from both sides that are so strong. I love what Melissa said about wanting to hear sort of from more of the average person that doesn't have such a stake in this, but is a taxpayer. Goes to St. Kitty Lighthouse on occasion or walks the bluff once in a while. So I'm hoping that we can somehow bring this back to a bit of a restart sort of and do things more correctly this time. Really take all of the knowledge that we've amassed and and just make sure all of the correct pieces are in place because, you know, hindsight is 2020 and maybe we can figure out a way to get everyone comfortable with taking this kind of back, back to the beginning in a way and and moving it forward with more recognition about where we're headed. About the fact that we definitely have to build a replacement road and that eventually we will have to face the meeting of some kind of failure criteria that will necessitate more further infrastructure and house moves that are existing. So I guess I will end with that. I think, I think that the picture becomes clearer. Hopefully, we can can work towards something that everybody can look well.
Thank you, Don. Kristi?
Thank you. I think everything that I was gonna say previously has been mentioned, and I agree with the rest of the board members. I think something that I've viewed this document, the statement as, is similar to our strategic plan. It kind of has this broad goal. It's our vision for the future. That's how we start each of our strategic plan goals. And then it kind of outlines some of the more immediate goals and things that we want to see get done, like Matt mentioned, having sand this winter. So it's kind of laying that groundwork, but it's not the be all and all. So every year, we're looking at that strategic plan and we're making tweaks and we're adding new goals. And I see this being a similar thing where we can adjust things as we're moving forward and getting more information or learning new things. But at least gives us that framework so that kind of what everyone's been saying is what is our goal? What is our vision? This, this is it. And this gives us that starting point. And then we get to move on from there.
Thank you, Kristi. Matt?
And just a reminder, this is a, this is a draft. If, you know, if Ken or Libby or I missed anything, you know, this is your chance to, you know, for you guys to put it in or for the public to put it in. And it would be great to have, instead of having the public tell us, you know, how dumb we are and how we're doing the dumbest thing ever, it would be great if the public could tell us, you know, how we could improve this. And so, you know, I think, you know, that would be, you know, that's my hope is that this could be, you know, let's get some positive, as much as possible, get some positive feedback. You know, I don't, you know, and so.
Constructive feedback. Might not be positive.
There you go. Thank you. That's the word. That's a better word.
Yeah. Melissa?
Thank you. And thanks for mentioning that, Matt. I think one concern I just wanted to raise with the board is on the strategy moving forward, issue number one. My sense is, and, you know, sort of going back to the Arcadis report, retain the existing tow protection for a period of time. And I think we have to get clear on what that period of time is. It's, it's not forever. It's but I think there has to be some agreement about at what point we are willing to say the tow protection is no longer viable or no longer needed. And I think concurrent to that, important to highlight that our commitment to start the planning of the relocation of Baxter Road and allocating resources to get that process underway, because that was a really clear takeaway from the Arcadis report. So I'm just not, you know, I'd love to hear from other board members about the period of time in which we're talking about retention of the existing tow protection.
Thank you, Melissa. Any response to that, Matt?
I'll wait. And I think, you know, Melissa, you make a really good point that, you know, we need to get started and, and on some of the big picture items, you know, the planning, et cetera. That stuff is, that is not gonna be easy for us. You know, if we were just doing straight out takings, it won't be easy for SBPF if they're going to be trying to willingly get neighbors to, you know, to do the road. Part of the goal here is to get a hold harmless for the town, get the people who are gonna be benefiting from that road to be willingly giving it and not forcing us to go lot by lot and, you know, and do takings. And we've received in the mail, in our emails, we received one or two neighbors already saying, well, if you guys don't do this, you know, you're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna fight you tooth and nail, and you're gonna have to take my whole property. You know, so we want to avoid that type of situation. I'm hoping that, you know, that we can find a way to avoid that type of sort of antagonism. My thought is, when is the tow protection go away? My thought is, we should be getting clear criteria together. I think last time we attempted to do it through a walkable beach, which, you know, I believe the beach is still walkable. I believe it has, it has thinned somewhat, not as much as, you know, as some people believe and, you know, and not, and it hasn't stayed exactly the same. So I, you know, I think the walkable beach idea was on the right path, but needs some refinement. That would be something that have to be done. What I've been telling people, this could last three years, or it could last 30 years. You know, if there's enough sand on it and it's, and it's not undermined and it's, and it's not impacting downdrift beaches, it could, it may not have to come out tomorrow. You know, so I think that's, you know, it would be great, you know, people, you know, there's some people are gonna say, we want to know, you know, how many years, how exact when it's gonna happen. I think that's partly unknowable, but I think if we have the triggers, if we get, you know, Arcadis or, you know, or others to help, help do some of those details on sand and on triggers and other things and get the input from the CONCON, we should be able to make that better. You know, we should be able to make that clearer for all of us. It's very clear when we have to move the road. When that stake was within 25 feet of the road, we have to start moving that road. That's you're sort of about the only thing, when I look at this, that's about the only thing that's clear out there right now. So.
Melissa?
Thanks, Jason. I guess this is a follow-up and thank you, Matt. I think we should consider adding some kind of caveat language to that number one. And I'm not quite sure how to word it. You know, until criteria to be developed. Are met, something that indicates that we're not talking about keeping the tow protection there forever. So I don't know how to paraphrase what Matt just said, but I don't, I don't know what you think about something like that.
Donna or Kristi? Or Matt? Any thoughts? Matt, just thumbs up?
Yeah, I think there could be some, yeah, I think we could put some wording in for based on criteria, and we still have to work on the criteria. You know, and Ken maybe can make it sound intelligent.
Don?
Maybe something like recognizing that the tow protection is is not sustainably permanent structure and over time, there will be there will, there will be a need, there will be the need to reevaluate. Something like that.
Yep. Any other areas we want to discuss before we go to public comment? Or comment from attendees? It's not public comment. Technically, Matt?
Yeah, the other, it's interesting. When you look through the coastal resiliency report, you know, tow protection is one thing, but one of the things that is talked about fairly often is building dunes. And they say in Maticet, we may need dunes. And sometimes those dunes have, you know, sort of, you look, some of them, I think they're planning to put tubes under them. So it's sort of, how is that, in some ways, that's not, it's kind of interesting. So how do you, you know, and all of this has to be permitted and has to be allowed and all that, but so I look at sort of this area and part of what we have in here talks about, you know, oh, and back to, back to Melissa real quick, three, three, three D on the top part had talked about the criteria, but we could put it down in number one, too. But back to sort of Scotts itself. You know, at some point, there's gonna, some of the Codfish Park is going to have to be relocated and moved. But then the question on Scotts itself, when I think about it, is when do we, you know, when do we, when do we hold the line or not? You know, and is that gonna be at the bluff of, you know, is that gonna be a bluff of Scotts or are we gonna allow, you know, sort of Scotts to erode? And I would argue if there's a way to protect the toe of Scotts and keep Scotts at town for, you know, from having to move all the sort of fishermen's cottages up on the bluff, if we can protect that part of Scotts, I would, I would think that that would be something that would be very popular. And the difference in Scotts then say Brant Point is those, those are at high ground. Those buildings are not gonna be, you know, that, that area is not gonna be dealing with groundwater rise. You know, the big, one of the big problems in Brant Point, even if we found a way to stop the water from getting into Brant Point, which is near impossible, and you probably couldn't do it for any amount of money. Even if you could, let's pretend the water's still gonna rise. It's still gonna come, the groundwater is still gonna come up. So that, you know, so that's a different area, but we're talking about areas, there are gonna be areas, the island like, you know, here and you know, sort of Tom Nevers, et cetera, where that isn't gonna be the issue, it's gonna be erosion. So, you know, so how we deal with it in different areas is gonna be different.
Thank you, Matt. Melissa?
Thanks, Jason. Just to add to that point, Matt, I think is a really good one, is that, you know, the important takeaway for me is that this is one neighborhood area that we're looking at. And clearly, there is the larger coastal resiliency plan and there are going to be recommendations and priorities for us to consider in the context of all of this. And I think we started off by talking about, in addition to that, all of these other capital improvements that are facing our community. And so I think, and we're going to need to have, and perhaps this comes at the time when we're, you know, finalizing the CRP or, I don't know, but you know, creating some criteria and adopting how we do prioritize those projects and what our goals are for coastal resiliency planning islandwide. And so that we're giving ourselves and future boards a template to use for evaluating, evaluation criteria, when do you move to action? How do you start to capital fund plan for these things? And there's, there's a lot of considerations. And I think it's important that the community understand that we are we are not laser focused on only this area that we are, this is somewhat controversial and has, has created a lot of conversation, but is also an area of need of attention right now. And I have the commitment, I think all the board does, that all of the, all of the island is going to receive the same kind of attention and commitment to planning that we're giving to this neighborhood right now.
Thank you, Melissa. I, over the years, I've tried to put this in context, because you can get so not in the weeds, but just have your blinders on and only focus on this part of the island. And I try to think about, well, what am I willing to do for the sewer beds or the airport or the historic downtown or Maticet? What is my willingness to have some negative impact to the environment to protect the historic downtown? Or sewer beds? What's the community benefit of all these different areas and projects? What's taxpayers? So you made me think of it when you said about the criteria of all these different areas. You know, we might do things for downtown to protect it in the next 50 years that maybe we're not willing to do right now in Scotts. But maybe we wouldn't 20 years because we've thought about it more and the values change. And I'm not saying protect this Baxter Road at all costs, regardless of what negative things could happen to the environment. I'm not saying that at all, but there's, there is a, there's a balance there. And I think we'd be, we as a community will be willing to do it in different places. So it's been interesting to see how people value this area, the island, the lighthouse, Scotts, you know, private homes that aren't year round. Does that play into it? So it, I'm trying to put that, all that into perspective when looking at this, this project as a whole. Any other comments? Melissa?
I would just suggest that, you know, we take in comment tonight from the public and some feedback and encourage people to reach out to us and not move toward adoption of this for a period of time so that we can give the community ample time to digest this, discuss it, discuss it with us both publicly or one-on-one. And then, you know, let it marinate a little bit, would be my suggestion.
Okay. Any other thoughts from board members? I'm, I'm fine adopting it and changing it, or I'm fine letting it, like Melissa said, marinating and discussing it, bringing it back? Don?
I think it would be better to adopt it when we, when we're totally feel, feel like it's a complete document.
Yep, makes sense. Your thoughts before we go to comments? Okay, can we go to the firsthand? Oh, Matt?
I'm just, I'm just, I think it's all right for it to marinate, but I don't, we don't have, you know, weeks and months. There are issues that we're gonna, you know, have to deal with. It would be great to have us united. Us united before we meet with Conservation Commission, which, you know, we, we've been attempting to set up. And so I, I, I think that that's. You know, so there's some marinating that can go on, but I, you know, I would say let's, let's. Let's work to keep that. You know, let's do this as efficiently and quickly as possibly because we've got, we've got a lot of other steps to make.
Yeah, I agree, Matt. We do need to be quick about it and this didn't go out last Friday, went out Monday or Tuesday, so a lot of people haven't had a chance. To look at it and marinate it for themselves. Okay, we'll go to attendees. Emily Molden has her hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Emily Molden here for the Nantucket Land Council. I just wanted to thank the select board for putting this document together and. Making it available for review and, and comment and also just wanted to. Speak to appreciation of some of Melissa's comments around trying to get some feedback from additional community members as well. I had some comments that I wanted to make and provide and I think largely it's. Just looking for some additional details, maybe just identifying, again, as I think one of you mentioned, some of sort of the. Hotspots or the areas that are going to be a little bit more challenging to, to finalize. And suss out, but as far as the primary town goal, it's clear about. Wanting to preserve the homes and access to Baxter Road as long as it's not harming others. But I think it's important to try to clarify what this means to the select board in the town and, and how it will ultimately be determined. Um, one of the things that I know we've been advocating to the Conservation Commission for, for a number of years now is to. Require that the raw monitoring data that's being collected up and down the eastern shoreline be made more available to the town. And to the public in an accessible format, just for easier digestion and, and looking at. And having to be able to review, but I think just that's one of those areas where there are likely to be some questions as far as what that. Means and how it's going to be determined in the future. Under the town strategy, moving forward. As you were discussing, it identifies the establishment of triggers for the roadway relocation and this kind of speaks, I think, a little bit to. Jason, to your comments around the cost benefit of different alternatives on different parts of the island, but. How those triggers will be determined moving forward. Certainly, they should consider the financial costs of the different alternatives of relocating the road versus maintaining tow protection from. More of a life cycle perspective. And I know the letter that the land council had submitted to the select board a couple of weeks ago from our consultant applied coastal. Included a chart using the cost estimates that were in the Arcadis report. Showing that by 2030, it's more expensive to maintain the tow protection than it would be to move the road. So. Again, kind of looking down at the bottom of the list there, under the strategy to spend the town citizen. Time and resources wisely, uh, just taking that into. Consideration and making sure that that analysis is, is really being done and used to establish those triggers. The first phase expansion to the south that's discussed on the list includes having clear failure criteria and. I just really felt it necessary to highlight and again, ask the select board to consider and really be thinking about. What those failure criteria would look like and the fact that the existing GO2 permit. Does have failure criteria that were quite specific and. Our recent experience has shown that even when those failure criteria are met. Enforcement or whatever the ramifications of that will be can be pretty challenging. So I think some. Additional consideration and explanation there will be important. And then, um, as I think was brought up somewhat at your meeting a couple of weeks ago, the. Final Arcadis, uh, report recommendations and their presentation to the select board included that recommended action plan and. While the plan does specifically recommend to begin construction of. The new road, once the planning is complete and, and funding is in place. It doesn't really discuss anywhere the expansion of the GO2. So. I think again, it will be important for the community to understand and for the town to ultimately better explain and justify. Why it has decided to go against those specific recommendations of the consultant and to jointly file, file an NOI for expansion. Um, and I, I just again, really appreciate the select board providing the opportunity to discuss. This and where your stance is and what your goals and strategies are going forward and hopefully there will be some more. Feedback for you guys from the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Thanks. Any comments from the board at all? On that, I'll just check in each time before you go to the next, next person. Okay, good. Mary lawmaker.
Thank you. I have two points to make. The first one is rather small but important. Uh, and that is that the document references, you know, not doing anyone any harm, but there's no definition of what harm is. And you'll find that people will take it upon themselves to define how that they've been harmed. Uh, whether it's financial, whether it's physical loss of, of property. Whether it's lifestyle, um, you know, there, there are many, many ways you could define that. So I think you're going to have to be very specific. About what constitutes harm and at what magnitude, um, you know, is a couple of square feet harm or is it a hundred square feet of, of property loss? It would be harm. Uh, so that, that's one point. The second thing that I want to say is that I am just incredulous that this. I, I, I do understand what you're trying to accomplish and you're, you're trying to move forward, but I am incredulous that you would. Issue a statement for a specific project before receiving the coastal resilience plan. Which is supposed to guide you for the entire community in which we have spent more than two years, uh, developing. And which is supposed to be delivered next week. The, especially when Christie references this as a strategic document. The coastal resilience plan is your strategic document. It should be guiding how you deal with individual projects. The, um, the, the town's master plan. Uh, and the area plans would have a similar relationship. This is an area that should be under the umbrella of a plan for the entire island. And what's going to happen if you make a statement for the Sconset bluff? When Brant Point comes to you and says, well, we want a statement for our area and Matikit comes to you and says, we want a statement for our area. And Tom Nevers comes to you and well, when it comes to you and every individual project says, well, what about us? How do we get our individual needs met? What you're doing is you're invalidating the entire concept of a coastal resilience plan. By issuing a statement about an individual area before that plan is even considered. The last thing that I want to say about that, I hope, is. If I can remember, I apologize. I'm, I'm sorry, I've lost my train of thought there. Jason, if you would perhaps come back to me, I will, uh, put my hand up if I get that back and I apologize.
Yeah, I wasn't planning on going back to anyone, but, uh, maybe Mary, if you had one more point. Matt?
No, I think Mary makes a couple of good points. She makes a good point about, uh. You know, everyone else coming to us, you know, that's a valid point. I will say, I, I think that this. Does fit in within the coastal resiliency plan, but we, the coastal resiliency plan wasn't going to be enough, enough depth. For this area, which is why, uh, we, you know, sort of augmented it. So other areas are going to need the, that extra. Focus at some point as well and, and there is a prioritization there, but this is something that exists and is an ongoing. You know, as, as is ongoing concern in a lot of different realms. Cost, legal, et cetera. So I think that's partly why we, we are where we are.
Thank you, Matt. Dawn?
Um, I would agree with what Matt says, I mean. This, this is an existing. Issue that's happening and we're kind of up against right now that there's active litigation. And there's no sand mitigation being provided right now. So these things have got to get worked out. And that necessitates us. Moving in some direction.
Yeah, I, I agree. There's, there was no intention of undermining, undermining or invalidating the coastal resiliency plan at all. Matt? You're, you're muted.
Yeah, just a quick comment to what Emily Molden said, I, I, I should have commented then, but there was, uh. They did send a great letter, land council sent a great letter on cost benefit analysis. Sort of what was somewhat missing in it is who pays and, you know, so the cost benefit is, you know, is. You know, are the taxpayers paying? Uh, how much is it going to cost, et cetera? So the, the, I, the benefit analysis was great. And if you assume that it's all going to be paid by the taxpayer, then she, then they are correct. But if you are, you know, part of the goal of this is to place, you know, benefit onto the people, you know, takes a large percentage of the benefit on those. Who are benefiting and that will, uh, that will in large part. Negate, you know, situations where people are coming and saying, I want the town to pay to save these two homes or this one home. You know, it, it, we're going to have to do, it's, you know, so I, I think that, that's the concept really is, is to. You know, is, is to. Spend the time and the money wisely in the areas where it can do the good, the most good. And by using that as part of the filter. I think that helps to achieve that.
Thank you, Matt. Think we go to the next, next hand up?
This is Burton Ballkind. Um, I wanted to thank, um, Jason for letting me participate. Uh, I wanted to talk about, uh, need for the sand budget, which was talked about in the coastal. Resiliency report, but before that, I just wanted, um, some of the board members mentioned that they wanted to get the community more involved. I know. It's, is some of the same voices over and over again, but I think as part of the coastal resiliency process, we had a bunch of charrettes where we had. If not hundreds, um, tens of people attending and, um, the coastal resiliency plan did. Come away with some communities key priorities. Uh, it's on page 12 and, uh, you know, maintaining Nantucket's character they wanted. Um, or we wanted implementing nature-based solutions and there's a list of other ones and. Um, none of them really talks about, um, uh, you know, um, taking, uh, making, putting a wall to protect. The private properties in a certain area, but I understand that you guys are trying to find solutions. So I, I, I just wanted, um, to let you know that in the document on page 12, there is some, uh, communities key priorities. So they did have some input. Uh, but I did want to talk about, um, where I think somewhat this, um, what you're doing with, um, this, um, strategy for. Sconset is you're putting, uh, as far as sand goes, the cart before the horse where, uh. We need to have an island-wide understanding of how the processes of erosion and accretion are happening and to, uh, just. Focus on one part of the island, um, without understanding the dynamics of the whole island, I think is. A little premature. I don't think it's a bad idea to come up with some ideas on how to address the problem that you're facing with. The Sconset and the bluff and that, but I think, um, you really to have, to be able to strategize correctly, you need to have a full understanding of how the system works. Um, so I'd just like to, um, say that. Thank you, Chairman, for the time.
Matt?
Yeah, and, and Bert, this is, uh, Matt and, uh, do I have it? Yeah, I got. Uh, point five on the strategy moving forward is in fund initiative study for sediment transfer. You know, and that's, that's the goal of that is to do that island wide. And so that's, uh. You know, and we're not asking, that's the town to do. We're not asking SBPF to do that. We've got, you know, but that, that is something the town has to undertake. And the, one of the good things that came out of the work group that SBPF and Jeff and Libby, myself. Ashley were on was, it came clear, it's clear from the work group that we were on, it's clear from their, you know, the coastal resiliency drafts. Is we're going to need a lot of sand. And we can't be, you know, we can't be digging it out of the ground and driving it around in trucks. We have to find a way to get it elsewhere, which will be difficult with the state. And we have to find a way to transport it. We have to find a place, places to store it. That is close enough that you could slurry, transport it to places you need it. And some of the recommendations are to. Put sand on the, by the airport and put sand out in Matikit and, you know, and. The state won't allow some of those things now. I think over time that's gonna be changing. It's gonna have to. You know, for, for a lot of the state and I think that we, you know, we're, so sort of some of the harm that we're, if we can figure, if we could put the. You know, the burden onto SBPF, you know, or help us with SBPF to source sand. And to have that available for town projects as we afford, we have done a huge benefit. For the future. I mean, we, uh, if we, or, but if we continue to sort of bang heads on this. We'll get five, 10, 15 years out and have no sand for anything. And we're going to need a lot of it. And so I think, you know, it's, that was a huge recommendation coming out of the. Work group and it's a key part of this is where are we, you know, where are we going to get sand and how are we going to source it? How are we going to use it?
Thank you, Matt. We go to the next hand up, Bruce Mendel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was very interested to hear Melissa's comments, uh, about hearing from other areas of the island. And this is important to us. Uh, Matt's comment regarding the town's goal to provide an equitable framework. For other areas of the island. Is encouraging and I think needs some more strategy input, even in broader terms. And this draft is very nice and good. It helps to, uh, kind of help us stare through the veil of executive session discussion. So. My comments, and thank you for allowing me a few minutes to do this. Uh, are meant to try to impart a broader context on this important issue. Some of the board members now were not involved, uh, at the time that my comments will relate to. But a little relative history is important and it ties into these issues. Uh, some time ago, the issue of coastal resilience and erosion project priorities. Was set by the town with a hierarchy of projects showing the top priority as the south shore in Matikit. Including especially the intersection of Matikit Road and Ames Street, the Ames Street Bridge. Alternate scenarios for access to Smith Point. Sconset bluff was on that same list of priorities, but it was at a lower level. On the list. Dave Franzudo at the, at the behest of town officials. Proposed a simple plan to protect the critical area at the south shore. At the time. The paved end of Matikit Road running south from the intersection of Ames and Matikit Road. Was more than 200 feet from the intersection, but it was eroding. The idea was to curtail and delay the erosion while plans were developed for the protection of the intersection. And to protect the access to Ames Street Bridge. At the time, dredged sand not used for neighboring property owners in Pulpus. Was to be stockpiled at the landfill site and used sacrificially in conjunction with the approved. Engineered plan to preserve and maintain the intersection while an alternate access plan was developed. This is very similar to what we're seeing now at the Baxter Road project. And that's the tie-in here. This top priority for the south shore was put aside by the town. The Baxter Road Partnership Project became the forefront where it remains. It would be good to see an approved priority list for other coastal erosion areas of the island. That we can, we can find and discuss as strategy points at this time. Then, and even now, access to Smith Points was said to be important. For resident services such as EMT, fire vehicles, police access, harbor master access. Jackson Point boat launch, public access to beaches and the like. These are similar reasons to why maintaining Baxter, Baxter Roads' conditions and the GO2s is on the agenda today. Similar Baxter Road, Mr. Franzudo's plan for the south shore area was the subject of several concomitaries. It was met with complete. It was met with complete community support. The CONCOM approved the plan. Implementation of the plan was handed off to the DL, to the DPW. The engineered plans, however, were not followed to the to the point of being uh implemented. And Maticat Road is now nearly at the intersection. Of course, those in the community most engaged with the plan were disappointed that the sand wasn't used as set forth in the approved plan. The South Shore community and members of our Conservation Association have funded costly efforts to protect the South Shore area. Dune protection measures, including installing drift fencing, planting thousands of dune grass plants, private efforts to protect the end of Maticat Road in cooperation with others, beach bank protection, uh, things of that nature. Recent recommendations by the engineering firm designing the bridge rehabilitation project for Ames Street and Massasoit Bridge Tech Engineering called for protective measures addressing daily tide flooding that's expected to occur by 2030, to be included in the current current design project. Slight roadbed elevation for the bridges, protection of the temporary culverts in Maticat Road, protection of the landfill area for flooding. These were important recommendations. Town officials instead directed these designers to ignore the recommendations and do little to no protective work on Massasoit Bridge, Maticat Road, and especially on the Ames Street Bridge, because in the words of the town official, the intersection of Maticat Road and Ames Street was not a priority if it should erode. The Ames Street Bridge would not be enhanced since it was to become, quote, "a bridge to nowhere," end of quote. And the residents of Smith Point on the other side of the bridge were, quote, "just seasonal residents," end quote, without the same status as residents elsewhere.
Bruce, can um, I'm trying to get everybody five minutes. You're over. I just um, I know this is this is important for the whole.
I I would like to finish, please.
Sure.
Thank you. Uh, so we were told the alternate access in the cases of emergencies could be via South Shore Bridges. And I'll I'll speed this up. The point of my comments is that as the Arcadis Coastal Resilience Plan report, a year in the making, a lot of community engagement, make it clear that we need to focus on island-wide prioritization of coastal resilient projects. The draft reporting provides suggestive prioritization. I sent you guys a graphic that boils it down to thirty-eight resilience projects. And it should be noted that in priority one, twenty-five percent of the items relate to the South Shore. We have priorities of higher proposed status than the expansion of the Sconsets Bluff project. Not to say the Sconsets plus, the bluff, unique in its status as a partnership and cost relationship, isn't important. It's clear the bluff is more stable now without expanding the range of the project. The separate Special Arcadis Baxter Road report, and I'm getting close to finishing, thank you, didn't recommend expansion citing regulatory and stakeholder issues. The several South Shore issues I have raised are all listed as top priorities by these engineers, but they're not being treated as such. Where do the other communities along our island shores fit into our coastal resilience efforts, please? So while the expansion of the already more stable protected area in Sconset is not consistent with our several consultant's draft reports and the prioritizations, I'm speaking to ask that the select board and town administration allow the other listed priorities to be addressed as soonest. Of course, we understand and appreciate the awkward position of the lengthy Sconset situation has backed us into litigation threats, litigation process costs, finding more sand, equitable cost arrangements. These experiences should be the basis of a learning platform for all of us to create a meaningful, science-based, actionable, island-wide plan.
Bruce, you're getting over ten minutes. I have to stop you soon.
Last paragraph. The comments made today will receive more than a per sary thank you for comments, we hope. We're concerned about a timely implementation of a careful, transparent coastal resilience plan. I'm sure that we can address island-wide coastal resilience and and erosion in our actions at this time. You guys have the data, information and science. We shouldn't be picking one area over the others. Thank you very much. Do you guys have any questions for me?
No, Bruce, that's um, that's not for everybody else. We have to go to other people. So Dawn, you had your hand up for a while.
Um, yeah, I mean, I just wanted to highlight that exactly what Mr. Mandell is talking about is why we're trying to come to some clearer path on this issue. It's not about prioritizing it. It's about trying to figure out how to prioritize the in the entire island with resources. Um, by spending so much time fighting about this and um spending endless legal dollars, that's really not moved us forward in any way and allowed us to focus on the other areas of the island and figure out a blueprint to work with neighborhoods where private homeowners are providing funding to work through these projects um so that we can get more stuff done all at once. I I think that 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 I actually, I uh agree with what he said, and but I feel differently about it, yes.
Thank you, Dawn. Can we go back to Mary Longaker? Mary, you said you had one other point?
Thank you very much. It ends brief. Uh, I appreciated Libby's comment at the beginning saying that this document originated from a desire to, you know, put down on paper what the the uh priorities and and uh thoughts of the board are. And I think it's appropriate that the documents stay at that level for internal use to guide you in your decision-making on this project and that it not rise to a formal statement to to be adopted by the select board. Because I I think that it's the coastal resilience plan that should be informing any kind of formal adoption of statement regarding a coastal resilience project. And that plan is simply not available to you yet. It should be available in short order. Um, I I would really encourage you to um, you know, to continue to work on this project as you see fit, but not to set precedent by um supplanting the coastal resilience plan with individual strategic statements. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. We go to Delma.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, just very quickly and actually in a way, I don't, I certainly don't mean to take much time here. And I guess I'm in a way repeating what Dawn just said, that what's being, one of the points being made is why now, why Baxter Road now, why should this be, have the degree of priority that has, you know, it has in this discussion in this meeting. And the answer is that there's an enforcement action that the CONCOM chose to uh have the uh geotubes removed, which uh number of engineers have pointed out that is highly likely to cause the breach of Baxter Road in relatively short order. It's it's obviously not in our hands, it's Mother Nature's hands, but any major storm without those geotubes there and Baxter Road will be breached or it'll get closer than twenty-five feet. And the result will cost the town multiple million, tens of millions of dollars before it's over in order to move Baxter Road to provide alternative access, etc. Tens of millions of dollars for the Nantucket taxpayer. Uh, the alternative is to uh maintain the project, extend the project, uh, preserve um hundreds of thousands, ultimately millions of dollars of property tax revenues for what it appears would be a substantial period of time. The geotubes have been in for eight years. They have what's done with, they have with standard uh multiple reasonably significant storms. Uh, and they were designed to do, they're designed to handle a hundred-year storm, which is why they've done as well as they've done. Uh, that will save the taxpayers of Nantucket tens of millions of dollars. Uh, it's a decision that needs to be made now. Anyway, that's it. One other thing to add is that includes saving homes built in in the nineteenth century, in the eighteen eighties and so on. So it's also a character thing with regard to the historic nature of the island as well as the money.
Thank you, Helmut. Just like we're having comments. We've been on this for for over an hour, which is which is a good amount of time for us to have a a good policy discussion. I think we've heard some good things about this, this document about this, this draft, which has been been helpful. Melissa?
Uh, thanks, Jason. Um, yeah, I I think I would also like to um sit on some of these comments before I recommend any, any changes to it. But I do think that um, you know, in terms of this being an internal document that states our our strategy and our concerns, I really appreciate that comment from Mary. Um, my my only thought to that is that it's very difficult. I find it very difficult. Um, and maybe it's in light of sort of the 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 legal conversations that are surrounding, the legal issues that are surrounding this particular issue. Um, to communicate with the community fully and openly about these um, the the perspective where we've got with in relationship to this specific project. So I don't think an adoption of this statement is an adoption of of policy. It feels important that the community can um easily understand um where our position is in relationship to SBPF and and what we're, what it is we're working towards. Um, but I'd like the opportunity to take all the comments tonight. I want to thank everybody um for them and um and integrate some of those into some feedback on this. Um, and my suggestion would be that we have it back on an agenda within a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Matt?
Yeah, no, I I think, you know, I think if we do it within a week or two, that's great. Uh, I think Mary Longaker makes a good point about we, you know, about uh precedent. But you know, so but at the same time, so but I think, so anyhow, I think she makes a good point that I'd like to think about. Uh, I also think though that we need to be, even if we get a sense of we're in agreement, we need to have that as a, you know, whether we vote it and, you know, and publish it or whatever. I think we need to have a sense of where we're going so that we can begin to, you know, make the uh, you know, make the steps to get there, because there's a lot of things that are, you know, including, we've got CONCOM and we've got in to deal with, we've got SPF to deal with, we have uh, you know, so there's a lot of work to be done by staff and by us and by others that, you know, that we all need to be pointing, we need to be rowing the boat in the same direction. And we need to be doing that so that we end up with a good example for other areas, so.
Thank you, Matt. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, everyone.
Oh, I'm sorry, Jason. I do have one. I just want to um thank Libby, Ken and Matt for initiating this draft and and starting this conversation. And I know they put a lot of hard work into it, so thank you all.
Okay, so we're finished there. Any other uh committee reports? Nothing? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor by roll call. Don Holgate?
Aye.
Matt Fee?
Aye.
Chrissy Ferentzela?
Aye.
Melissa Murphy?
Aye.
Jason Bridges eye. Thanks, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you all.